It's ten o'clock, it's time for the council meeting session. Will council members please come to the council chamber? It's fifteen minutes after ten, and we have Mr. Burton, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Walters. We have six members present in four first quorum. I remind you, the council members, that it's fifteen minutes after ten. In order... We do have a quorum. Holden is here, yeah, call the roll.
Burton, Chick, Fury, Galanter, Gober, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Fernschwax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, the council will please come in order. This is a meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the seventh day of March the year 2000. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel thirty-five, and we're also being monitored by council phone. The first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Galanter moves, Mr. Fury seconds. There's no objections, unanimous vote.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
There's no objections, unanimous vote.
Invocation.
Ms. Galanter, will you introduce the Reverend who is... Would everyone please stand for the invocation?
I would be delighted to do that. Reverend John David Webster is a minister in my district, and actually all over the city, and someone who has been very helpful in, not only with respect to his own congregation, which he opens for community meetings whenever we need a space, but also in helping us with the... with throughout the community of clergy in organizing the Days of Dialogue, and it is a delight to have you here, and I'm delighted to see you.
Well, thank you, it's good to be here. Shall we pray? Gracious Creator of this universe, on a day when so many decisions are being made about the future of this country, not only in this city but around this country, we ask for a moment of silence to recognize a power greater than ourselves. We ask also that you would guide the deliberations of this day, but more than that, my prayer for this group is that in a day and a place where we ask for so many things, that there might be those who would stop by or a card or a letter and acknowledge the gift that these men and women give consistently and dedicated through the years. A gift of thanks and appreciation, because without them, we could not move forward. For all of the things that you're about to do and will do in the days ahead, we give you thanks and praise. Amen.
Okay, thank you Reverend. The next item.
Item number one on the regular agenda, request that this matter be continued until March eighth.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number eight, I request that this matter be continued until March twenty-first.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number sixteen, I request that this matter be continued until March fifteenth.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number fifteen on the regular agenda is an appointment of Commissioner, appointment of J. Mike Monasmith for the Los Angeles Export Terminal.
Ms. Galanter.
I don't think Mr. Monasmith actually needs an introduction to most of you, but I do want to say that I had... the committee has recommended his approval. I had the opportunity to talk separately with him about the challenges that are inherent in the LAXT situation, and he assures me that he's tough enough to take care of it. So I enthusiastically recommend his approval.
Any further discussion? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
You've been approved, and we want to congratulate you, and thank you for serving the city.
Forthwith, please.
Forthwith on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Let me say that there's... the famous mayor of Monrovia is in our chamber. The famous mayor of Monrovia.
The question is, is Monrovia a real city?
Bob Bartlett...
Also past president of SCAG.
Welcome to our city, past president of SCAG, past president of the League of California Cities. He's just a past everything.
It's past, Bob.
Okay, the next item.
Item number twenty-one, I request that this matter be continued until April seventh.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number two on the regular agenda is an item notice for public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who wants to be heard on item number two? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on item two? Mr. Pacheco, you move on item number... I mean, Nick, Nick on item number two? You move? Item number two, you move approval?
Yes, move approval.
Okay, all right, prepare the roll on item number two. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Items number three through fourteen on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Number eight has already been acted on.
Thirteen, we have two... Two files. Mrs. Walters?
Councilman Ridley Thomas is unable to be here today, and he has asked that item seven be continued one day, please.
Is there any objection to continue seven one day?
Ms. Walters? Oh, yeah, I just spoke to Mark, and she spoke to him also maybe before I did, but I just spoke to him, and he says, you know, the votes are there, and since people are waiting to be counted, he says, go ahead unless there's any reason why it shouldn't. Is that okay, Ms. Walters?
Mr. President, my communication with Mr. Ridley Thomas was that he was unable to be here and asked that item seven be continued one day.
Yeah, call me on the phone.
Okay, let's just hold it on the desk, we'll call it special.
Mr. President, I do have an amending motion for item seven as well.
Okay, we'll call it special. Okay, are there any other specials? We need a motion on four and on thirteen. Mr. Hernandez moves four B. Huh? We can adopt both if we want.
Right, my understanding was four B includes a budget finance, just ask for bi-weekly reporting.
Okay, and what about thirteen? We need a motion on that one.
I think Mr. Padilla has an amendment to seven, therefore we should continue it for a day to include all districts, all districts that may have the same kind of problem with some kind of direction about how we want the money spent. So let's continue it for a day.
Which one's that?
Item seven.
Well, that's what Mrs. Walters wanted.
I know, but based on this amended motion, we have to do it.
Okay, is there any objections to continue seven until one day? Seeing none, that will be the order. And also the motion by Mr. Padilla will be continued. Okay, thirteen, anybody make a motion?
I'll move thirteen B, Mr. President.
Mr. Hernandez moves thirteen B, so prepare... there's no specials there, so prepare the roll on... well, we'll continue, the ordinance is one day because I think we're expecting a full order, so we'll have four as a motion on four, five, six, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen as a motion, and fourteen. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next, next item. Yeah, Jim.
Items number seventeen through thirty-two on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item number twenty-one has already been acted on.
Twenty-three and twenty-four special?
Yes.
first of all, we have, we have people who want to be heard on seventeen, we'll call that special.
That's the ordinance, do you want that continued?
We want that continued one day, which is an ordinance, and we'll continue eighteen one day, it's an ordinance. And thirty-four, so we'll call those special. Any specials by... anybody want to be heard on any of the other items? If not, the public hearing is closed. Does Mr. Shapiro, I run the meeting, please? Okay, the public hearing is closed on all those except the ones I call special. Any other specials by council members? If not, prepare the roll on... let's see, we have nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five through thirty-two.
Twenty-nine has a card.
And twenty-nine has a card, and we'll call that special. Okay, prepare the roll on those, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number thirty-four on the supplemental agenda is an item for which a public hearing...
We have a card on that too, so we'll call that special. Okay, and the next item.
Item number twenty-three, call it special.
All right, Mr. Shapiro.
Mr. President and council members, item twenty-three concerns an authorization from the CRA Administrator for the allocation of the twenty-sixth program year of the CDBG funds in the amount of $179,000 for building a cultural crescent blue line entrance and parking facility. Now, I know there's a CRA in the Watts area that this has got reference to, but there's no mention made as to how much money is being spent in there, but there's money being taken away from the certain facilities to be put into an entrance and parking facility. Now, why is the entrance and parking facility so important? I'd like to see the general, the CRA plan for this area and to see how this new parking structure fits into the general overall objective of what you're trying to do. There's also, it says create a new objective to reflect the receipt of 346,000 in grant funds from the MTA. The MTA has given you funds and the receipt of 179,000. You're taking this additional money and you're putting, you're transferring it from the community marketplace, the Grand Oasis Center, and the response to development opportunities, and you're putting it in this new thing. Why the big change? Why is it up, what's written all about, and why doesn't it... why isn't it explained in the backup papers a little more specifically than it is? The proposed project involves the design and development of a park and ride lot, a kiss and ride use. Kiss and ride, that's, that's something new. Bicycle, bicycle parking, and in addition, the CRA amended its report. I'd like to know, there's much more information on this change for this, the Watts, the redevelopment project area that the public should know before the city council votes on it, Mr. President.
Okay, we, we have item number twenty-three. Mr. Pacheco, did you, you call that special?
Wait a minute.
Mr. Pacheco, you called-
Yes, Mr. President, I was simply gonna amend 23 and 24 that they, before they expend the funds, that they come back to committee for approval, but we definitely wanted to fund the programs and the projects so that we could comply with our memorandum with the MTA, our grant agreement, because we want to meet their deadline and not lose our funding for these projects in the city. And we've, I think council member has, Hernandez has some questions on this issue, so I'm not sure if we want to hold it on the table and have us talk on the floor, or you want to go over it right now.
Right. I can try and go over part of it right now. This is not an issue I think that Mr. Pacheco and I need to talk about. It's more an issue of how the agency continues to deal with block grant money, CDBG monies, why it is that the agency hasn't reported to the Economic Development Committee as to its work plan for use of CDBG monies. And it's a classic example of what I was trying to point out to everybody the last time these issues came before us. I basically am asking for a one-day continuance so that the department can talk to us. I know that the department could be using CRA discretionary funds. All of a sudden, they continue to find CDBG monies that they're taking from another project someplace else and applying it to this project. Members of the council, you all have motions in the line item called projects ready to be funded. And from my perspective, CRA is not participating in that process, and what it's doing is they're taking monies away, applying them to line items without it going through review in terms of the whole. And I just want you to be aware of it. That's what my problem really is. Mr. Savornich has projects that he has, that he wants funded, his projects ready to be funded. Mr. Pacheco has projects in that line item. We were waiting for a work plan from CRA. We wanted to know what kinds of block grants they were holding so that we could review that, and they continue to use those CDBG monies rather than their discretionary monies, and that's where my problem lies. And so what I wanted to do is continue this item one day so the department could share with me where the CDBG money's coming from, why they decided to use this money as opposed to CRA discretionary funds, so that I can make sure it doesn't impact the projects that each and every one of you has in that line item. And that's why I was asking for a one-day continuance.
Is there any objections on one-day continuance?
And obviously, I'm checking with, and Mr. President, just to make it clear, we basically passed a motion that CRA would go to CED on CDBG monies, and for some reason, they continue not to do that. And I just want you to know that that was a policy statement that was passed, and they're not complying with that policy statement.
Mr. President, there's no objection on my part to continue it one day, and I checked with the individuals related to this. I do want to state that our efforts are to try to meet the deadlines from the MTA so we don't lose the funds, and we were gonna fund it from this source at this point, and that's why I was requesting the amendment that before they expend it, it comes back to committee for approval so that we can cure this deficiency that's been pointed out.
And I think I clearly understand that. I just, if we don't have to do that, we don't have to do it. That's why I was asking for the one-day continuance so I could just review-
Mr. President, we'll figure this out and bring it back to you tomorrow.
Okay.
There's a one-day continuance on item number-
Yeah, and the CRA will meet with my office today and explain where the CDBG money's coming from so that we know.
Mr. President, that's 23 and 24. They're similarly situated issues for Mr. Hernandez.
Okay, so 23 and 24 will be continued one day. Next, next item.
Item number 29, a request from the public to speak.
Mr. Shapiro.
Mr. President, item 29 concerns the, the planning department is in the completion of community plan updates, and they're requesting that additional improvement mitigation services from three firms be, whose contract will expire should be continued. The Barton, Meyer, Kaku, Kaku Associates. My point is this, on their background, backup material, they don't specify what these people are doing, what these organizations are doing in the way of mitigation, how much their services have been, how much of their services have been completed, and how much do they need further. They just mentioned community plan updates and requires additional services. I don't think this is the way to do business. I think if people want to have their plans done, they ought to put down money. How much money is involved? How much time is involved? What's their intent to do with the time? What should they do? There's too much material that's completely missing from item 29, Mr. President.
Okay, we have item 29 before us. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item. Fourth with on that. Fourth with on item four and five also. Next item.
Item number 34 called special.
Yeah, Leonard Shapiro.
Mr. President, and I am 34, there's no backup material for the public to look at, so all you got is this motion which you have as an addition to the regular agenda. You're, evidently, Pacheco and Padilla made the motion to extend the Seismic Governance Committee City Hall Rehab Authority to enter into other projects. You're taking money from the city rehab project, and you're moving it to other projects. $124,000 that comes so much from this, $81,000 from this Department of Street and Lighting, and $43,000 from the Department of Transportation. I say again, there's too much information that the public doesn't have on this entire city hall rehab project. What is going on right now? Are you spending $150 million, $250 million, $300 million on rehabbing the old city hall right now? And now you're taking money away from this rehab project, and you're giving it to other places. I don't know if this is the way to go. I think if you're gonna do something like this, lay your cards on the table, let the city council, let the public see what you're doing, and then go ahead and do it if it's okay. This leaves too much up in the air, Mr. President.
Okay, the public hearing is closed on item 34, is it? Any discussion on 34? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Not on the agenda is special one. It's a motion by Glanter Fuer. Findings need to be made.
So, thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Weingard?
Yes, thank you. On February 23rd, the Board of Harbor Commissioners awarded a one-year contract with a one-year renewal option to Metro Building Maintenance for custodial services at the Ports of Call. Last Friday, they found out that the firm is under investigation by the California State Labor Commission for business practices which are in violation of the overtime laws. Today is the last day to act, therefore the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act. And then the council would vote on the Prop 5, of which this is, and then there is a further motion that upon asserting jurisdiction, that the council move to reject the recommendations set forth in the board report.
Okay, prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
The matter is before us.
Before we do on number special one, can I ask for number 10 to be going fourth with?
Yes, fourth with on item 10.
Thank you.
Ms. Glanter.
Thank you. I just wanted, first of all, to congratulate the Harper Department for catching this and bringing it to our attention directly. This should be viewed as a friendly Prop 5. This is a, actually, an important event to note in which the Board of Harbor Commissioners has basically said, on the basis of new information, we think we made a decision that is not a good decision, is not in the best interests of the city or consistent with city policy, and the only way to change that at this point in time is for the council to assert jurisdiction and reverse the board's action. So we're actually doing this at the request of the board, and I would urge support of the, of asserting jurisdiction and of the recommendation to-
But it's under investigation, is it?
Well, Mr. Henry is here from the port, and if you'd like to hear from them, I think you should.
Well, we just received this late Friday afternoon, the information that they're, they're under investigation. We'd like to take some time to evaluate that information, and if we didn't do anything, it would go through today and we'd have a final contract, so that's why we're asking the council to do this today.
Now, we could assert jurisdiction today and not take the action to rescind the contract for 21 days, right?
Yes, you could. That gives us our 21-day-
What we need from you is clarification whether you feel that you've done, you've gathered enough additional information that we should kill the contract now, or whether we should assert jurisdiction, which puts it in limbo and then do it in a-
Well, what we'd like to do is have the contract rejected right now, and we're gonna go back and do it. We'll probably select another vendor, but we want to get this one rejected.
Okay, so you'd like to just put the whole-
But in the meantime, who would, who would operate the-
We have, we have employees down there doing it now temporarily. They were supposed to start this contract this week, but we can, the board is going to meet on March 15th, and by that time, we'll have another board-
So we're really, we're really saying they're guilty of whatever they're being investigated for?
Well, we want to investigate a little bit more, but we can't, we have to do what we're doing today in order to stop with the contract.
Well, no, wait, wait, just, Bob, just so we make sure we're all understanding the same thing. There are, there are two steps here. One is we assert jurisdiction, which I think we all agree we need to, I hope we all agree we need to do. The, if we assert jurisdiction but do not take the second action, the contract just stays in limbo until the board, oh, no, we have to kill it in order for them to take, that's it, John. We have to finish this one so they can hire somebody else.
Okay, prepare the roll on the motion by Ms. Glanter, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. The next item. Yeah, we did it all.
Item number 33 on the regular agenda is a closed session item-
Yeah, we'll leave that on the desk.
So now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, public comment. Julie Butcher?
Sorry, I was slightly distracted. Good morning. Representing more than 1,000 civilians who currently work for the Los Angeles Police Department, I rise to express outrage over the department's immediate plans and actions to decivilianize the police department. Workers throughout the jail system have been told that effective March 12th, which is next week, that there will no longer be civilian management of the jail, and that sergeants and lieutenants will be moving back into the jail. This message, with different though equally immediate timelines, has gone out department-wide. To remove civilian workers from the management structure of the city's jail system is to undo 10 years of progress. It flies straight in the face of the Christopher Commission's recommendations and is counterintuitive on every measure, from cost effectiveness to any result-based analysis. Unfortunately, it's clear that the police department wants neither civilian oversight nor civilian influence at any level in the organization. That the chief would attempt to blame any of this outrage on civilian workers or on the civilianization of the department is offensive to every civilian in the city. To insist that civilians within or outside the department are capable, incapable of understanding, much less governing or overseeing, police work is the hub of the us versus everybody view that has allowed the department to be where it is. Local 347 implores you to stop this immediate move to undo the civilianization of the jails and of the department, and to instead force a good stern look at the civilianized functions of the department for opportunities to expand that civilianization in the interest of the workers, in the interest of our collective coffers, and in the interest of the entire city. Thank you.
George Robinson?
Mr. President, members of council, if these walls could talk, they would speak to the war between the sexes. The birth of a nation as great as ours is not supposed to be couched in the misconception that women are property, second-class citizens. Sir, after centuries, America persists in perpetuating the myth that Eve is evil. The myth lies squarely in America's lap. America is sexist. America's afraid of feminism. The Equal Rights Amendment has not been passed. Pray for Hillary Rodham's victory. As the city stands at the start of the third millennium, negative attitudes permeating the fabric of Proposition 22, the subconscious message underlying the proposition is not only anti-gay, it's also anti-feminist. The bedroom is not a public place. Law cannot legislate morality. As the glass ceiling is lifting and choice is becoming real, there are reactionaries who deny that the gene for intelligence is carried on the X chromosomes, deny that intelligence is given to man through woman, deny that the female of the species is of finer intelligence. Vote no on 22. Don't forget to vote.
Okay, Leonard Shapiro.
Mr. President and council members, I just came from the meeting of the police commission in which Jimmy Hahn was addressing them at 10 o'clock, where he, where he stated, he was talking about the Board of Inquiry report, and he was stating that never before in the history of Los Angeles has a problem of this magnitude come before the, the city. And he, in his opinion, he was saying that the, you didn't need any outside investigation, that the police commission and the inspector general could do the job. Well, that's his opinion. My opinion is you do need an outside investigation. And one of the main reasons I say that is of all the articles that have been written in the papers, there's one by the former police chief of San Jose, California, where he points out the fact that they had a similar situation that existed in the sheriff's department of this county, where, where drug dealers, where, where the sheriff deputies were robbing drug dealers and selling drugs. And they wondered why the situation wasn't handled right now from Rampart in the same way it was handled by the sheriff department. There was a sting, a sting operation set up by the FBI who were called in immediately, and in the long run, 29 deputy sheriffs were convicted. Now, the way things are going now, with nobody being convicted in LAPD, you don't know what's going to happen. But the, the point, the also point is that if you don't face up to the fact that the city is involved in a historical situation that has to be faced, then we, as this says, greedy lawyers are going to make you aware of this. When people sue the city, and they found that the city and the police department and individual police officers are guilty, and that sentences or decisions are rendered of $125 million, $250 million, or $1 billion or $2 billion, nobody really knows, but that's going to have a definite impact on the city. Now, for the city to say, let the police commission handle it, because that's the way that things go, and we don't need another Warren Christopher Commission set up, is to bury their heads in the sand. More and more people are coming out, one after the other, and saying that you need an outside investigation, and the only way you can restore credibility of the police in its own police department is to show them that the city council is aware of what's happening, and they're gonna do everything, use all the resources at their disposal. And at their disposal is the one resource to call in a second Warren Christopher Commission and look and there's a situation which is much worse than the beating of one individual. There's too many people involved, too much planning of evidence, too much of beating people up for no reason, too much of saying that we can perjure ourselves, and too much of the code of silence. It has to be faced. The Board of Inquiry report did an excellent job, going as far as they did, but they didn't look at all from any outside viewpoint, what are you gonna do about this general situation? And that view has to be led by the city council because the mayor has stated that he wants to back the chief of police without any qualification whatsoever. The city council has said that they think an outside source is needed, and it's needed now, and there's no use waiting on it, because the more you wait, the more it'll get behind time. Other people will come up with different articles. I say, follow Joel Wax's recommendation that you set up an outside commission with the same caliber of people involved in it that you had under Christopher Commission, and let's get going and find out what happened in Rampart and other stations that haven't even been examined yet in the city of LA, and let's make sure it doesn't happen again in the future, Mr. President.
That's all the cards we have, so the public comment period is closed. Mrs. Walters?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that item 30 be reconsidered for the purpose of asking that it also go to Arts, Health and Humanities Committee.
Okay. Prepare the roll on reconsider, is there a second on the- Prepare the roll on reconsider, is there a second on this? Is there a second on Mrs. Walters' motion?
Motion is for reconsideration of an item that should have been in Arts, Health and Humanities at the outset. It's a Recreation and Parks Department issue.
What's the item?
Item 30.
Item 30. Well, first of all, is there a second? I don't hear a second, so there's dice for lack of a moment, second. Next item.
Item number 33 is a closed session item.
Okay, then we're gonna go into closed session, so all, anyone not involved with the executive session, please leave the council chamber, and in the meantime, let's clear the desk off.
Motion for posting a referral.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Request for excuse from council. Councilmember Hernandez requests to be excused on Friday, March 24th, for city business. This requires a motion.
Mr. Holden moves. Unanimous vote.
I'm excused on the 15th, right?
And 17th.
Well, I can come in on this case. You better excuse me on the 17th, I gotta take chemotherapy. 15, 17.
Request that Councilmember Farral be excused on March 17th for personal business. Meets policy.
Unanimous vote. We have item 33. Motion by --
Item number 33 is before you. It's authorized on the city attorney to expend $1,522,951 and 38 cents plus interest accruing at 7% per annum after March 1st in settlement of case.
Okay, we have, Mr. Fuer moves that, so prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item.
The desk is clear.
The desk is clear. Would everyone please stand for adjournment motion? Ms. Glanter.
Thank you. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of James Anthony Marsinkas, who, at the end of his life, was a Westchester resident, but spent a good part of his life growing up in Venice. As a young man, he decided to, at 10 years of age, a really young man, he joined the junior judo class in the Santa Monica YMCA, and he went on to become a teacher of jujitsu and was promoted to black belt at the age of 17. Had a career doing all of that, and then decided to enlist in the US Army as the war in Vietnam was heating up. He was in an Army Reserve Mobile Hospital Unit, and spent a number of years in the reserves, then retired from that, joined his family's real estate business, went to law school, and remained a kind of family lawyer for the neighborhood till the end of his life. And he died a young man, we are not very happy about this. He's survived by his mother Bertha and his brother Dave.
Mr. Pacheco.
I wanted to, council president and colleagues, adjourn in memory of my neighbor. I'm not sure if you had this type of individual in your neighborhood, but he was a senior citizen at the time that I was a kid, and he was the landlord of quite a few properties on my block. And he was the same gentleman who would always tell me not to walk on his grass and stay out of his lawn. But he was generally a very good neighbor. I think he was the type of landlord who provided his tenants good housing right there in Bald Heights, and so I want to adjourn in memory of Charles Lopez. I only knew him as Mr. Lopez. I never knew his first name until I looked him up on our database, but I want to adjourn in memory of Mr. Lopez, and he survived by his wife and children. Yeah, stay off the grass.
Call the roll. Hi, the council is adjourned. Yeah, we'd have been, we'd have been 20 minutes sooner without --